I call this morning meeting into order at 7:01 PM. We just did our official roll call. Thank you, audience participants, for being here today. We appreciate it. Our main item on our agenda is, this is special meeting, so we're going to discuss the certified local government grant projects. Thank you, Marcus, for listing those out. Should we, maybe we should go over those right now before we get into discussion? Give me one moment. Okay. Thank you, Marcus, for listing these out for us. So I'm just going to go over them so we know what we're discussing and if there's any items that we want to add to this list. So also, the order is not necessarily listed by priority. It's just listed by the projects that we were discussing at the last two meetings. The Royer District signage and/or the brochure update, the historic preservation website, that's part of the city's website, landmark district owner education program, the downtown district signage banners, the historic resource inventory, and the historic preservation plan update, which we know that the current plan is from 1998. And I know Marcus sent us a message about voting. I wasn't clear if we needed to vote before coming here or if that's something we're going to do today. I guess probably we're going to discuss it more and then maybe we'll have a vote, I imagine. Go ahead.
I think that's where we did. We were invited to vote and that's been tabulated, but I don't have access to the shared Google Docs. I reported mine by email, so I haven't seen a summary.
Understood.
Okay, so presumably he can share with us the summary of ratings. But if you haven't weighed in, there was a message also that that could happen tonight, so. But I think a number of people had already voted.
I also did not have access to the Google Drive, and I still don't. I just checked. But I send it by email as well.
Angela? I forgot my list that we had been given to, I already responded to it, but I didn't bring it with me. So could you go over like the fourth, fifth, and sixth items that were on our list of choices?
Yes.
The landmark, something or another?
Yes. And yeah, I also am not totally clear on what all of those entail, so I think that's something we're going to discuss as well, hopefully. So the first one is the Royer District signage and brochure update. Second one is the historic preservation website, which is part of the city's website.
Right.
The third is landmark and district owner education program.
Okay.
The fourth one is the downtown district signage and banners.
Okay.
And then the fifth one is historic resource inventory, and the sixth one is the historic preservation plan update.
Okay, thank you. Who might want to work on which projects and how to select them? Trying to keep you all in the dark about who to sign up to play in the sandbox with. I just basically told you who had voted for what. Let's see if I can log in to the Google Drive.
Yeah, and Marcus, I think we all confirmed that we did not have access to the Google Drive.
The entire Google Drive?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, several people though did get access to the spreadsheet, because I did get...
The Google Drive and the spreadsheet, that's the same thing, right?
There are, there are...
The spreadsheet is on the Google Drive.
The spreadsheet is in the Google Drive, yeah.
Because I did get access to the spreadsheet.
All right, let's... What I might just do is...
I was denied access.
Okay.
That list that we just went over, if we want to also add a few, I think we could mention that now. One that I had sent to Marcus that was brought up by Kate at our last meeting was the potential to recruit a student intern to assist over the summer, who could potentially knock out at least the beginning stages of some of these other items that we have on the list. So that could be a potential that we just discuss.
So, well, I believe you have to have a project laid out for them. So hiring an intern is not a project. Listing the things that you want to do, the intern to do would be the project, and then...
Yes.
The hours would be part of the budget for that.
Yeah, if I misstated that, but that's, yes, we would specify what the intern would specifically
Okay, so in the CLG drive, which rather than giving a link, I will just attach your board and commission email addresses to that, and then you should be able to get in with your, or no, I'll use your personal email accounts, and that way it's not FOIA-able. Okay, so in the Urbana folder in CLG Grants, here are the folks that have signed up so far for things. This is just kind of in the order that people contacted me. Trent was interested, well, so we've got several people who are highly interested in the Royer District brochure. Since Dennis had brought the idea, I put him in there. Trent had said he was interested in. David did as well. For the website, Kate had given it a four and David had given it a three. For the landmark and district owner education program, that was the discussion that the folks from PACO were also interested in working on, where there would be, you know, brochures, mailers, things to educate both current landmark property owners, but also to, you know, advertise to people about the benefits of landmarking your property and maybe getting more landmarks in the city. As well as regular contact with those property owners to remind them that you're not supposed to do anything to the exterior of the property without getting a certificate of appropriateness and annually thanking them for being a landmark property owner and inviting them to participate in the preservation month activities. So that's what that was about, and it could extend into things like working with realtors to educate them on the benefits of having a landmark and not seeing it as a, as an albatross around a potential property owner's neck. There's a lot of different ways that that could go. But the main thing is, you know, and also updating our existing historic preservation landmark and district brochure, which is out of date and hasn't been messed with for about 10 years. And then the downtown district signage idea was one I think I brought where there are lots of historic downtowns or other historic districts where they have signage or banners on the streetlights showing people as they drive by or drive in, hey, you're in a historic Alice had a grad student design some signage for the properties downtown, the individual buildings, saying, here's what used to be in this building with a QR code to a website where that information would be, you know, available online. At Kate's nudging, because she looked and read the manu, the grants manual, the CLG grant cannot pay for signage. However, it sounds like it might be able to pay for design of said signage. I'm not sure. We're going to double check with John Presley on that, which means that there's a lot that could be done. A signage program could be put together and designed and figure out what buildings they want to be put in, get the design made, find, you know, estimates and companies to do it, and then rely on other grants or the city to purchase the signage. And that, I think, includes either street banners or freestanding, and I think also, unfortunately, Dennis, it might include the Royer signage. So it might be able to pay for re-sign. It could certainly pay for printing and redesign of the brochure, but more of the signs, it doesn't sound like, could come out of the CLG grant, so.
For clarification, could you maybe point out where in the application that is stipulated?
Page seven.
Pardon me?
Page seven. It's, where is it? The following project types are not eligible for grants: acquisition or repair of historic buildings, projects involving active religious organizations, historical markers or signage. It's right in the center of the page.
Oh, yeah, okay. It's funny, I thought it was like one of the things that was included. I didn't read the "not" part of it, so.
It's uncommon to not pay for signs.
Too bad.
So, and, you know, I have not compared this manual with the manual from '22. The CLGs did not get this manual until today, and I think that was frankly prompted by me pestering John on Monday about, with a bunch of questions. But, yeah, and I frankly wouldn't have thought that signage would not be a thing that they would not pay for, but, but at least, you know, it's possible the design and a plan could be paid for. And so those, and then in the email, as discussed, the preservation plan and the historic resource inventory database, I think those are things that are going to take more than a month or even two months if we had started a month ago, to come up with a timeline and a budget on what it would cost to revise our preservation plan, as well as figuring out what and who might do our more surveys of buildings. And frankly, I think if we put in two applications this year, that's two more and more applications than we've put in in the last five years. So I think we'd be really leagues ahead if we focused on these short things. And then work on the bigger projects, continue and start working on them and continue on them until the next grant cycle.
What's the difference?
In the mic, please. That's all right.
What's the difference between our historic plan, which is old, and the historic ordinance?
So the historic plan...
Established as a source that we run by.
Was written in '98, and then I think the preservation ordinance basically codified what was in the plan or what could be codified into a regulatory document.
All right, so they work together, basically.
Yes. So it's kind of like the comprehensive plan, how it relates to the zoning ordinance. There's lots of philosophy and ideology in the comprehensive plan, and you boil it down into a set of zoning districts for the zoning ordinance. So the preservation plan might be, you know, we value education, so we think we ought to do these things. That probably isn't going to be reflected regulatory-wise in the historic preservation ordinance, but the ordinance might talk about, here are the things that the HPC is charged with working on. They need to talk with property owners. They need to talk with realtors. They need to work with the county assessor to, you know, work on property tax freezes and things like that. Yeah. So I think the plan is your guidance document and the ordinance, and it might be time to, you know, update the ordinance itself.
My concern with holding off till 2025 with the plan is that, well, besides that it's 26 years old, is that if there are any, if there's any movement we could make sooner that could help us for 2025. So for example, if we were to have someone, you know, work part-time to work with SHPO, because, yeah, we're not going to, we're not, we don't have enough time to put out an RFI, to find a firm who could do this plan.
Right.
But even, even reviewing the old plan, noting where we need to do significant updates, even that is, is a lot of like preliminary work that could potentially happen.
I see what you're saying, and I, I see the value in that. With that being said, you know, I skimmed that grant application a little more, and it did have some breakouts here under planning projects for revision of existing planning And so, you know, it, I think what, the next step after we figure out what projects we do want to work on would be writing a short, one paragraph scope, and then scheduling a call with John Presley and saying, here's our four or five or six ideas and their scopes. And then the explanation, say, for the preservation plan would be, this first phase is just seeing how bad of shape it's in and where we should go from here. And that might be, you know, a $1,000, $2,000 review thing as opposed to a $15,000 or $20,000 preservation plan overhaul.
Could I ask a question about that? So I see the value of that, but why wouldn't we be able to do that? Why would we have to hire somebody to do that? I mean, aren't we smart? And we don't have expertise? Wouldn't that be something that we could do?
To update the plan, you're saying?
Yeah, it's our plan. Wouldn't we, wouldn't we be able to update our own plan? Why would we need to bring in somebody who doesn't know our community to do it? I just don't quite, I mean, I think it's a valuable goal, but I just think that we have the expertise on the board here, on the commission, to make a review of our own plan. It could be one of our projects for the coming year, but, I mean, we all have a little bit of time, I think, or do we? Maybe I'm assuming, you know?
I would, I appreciate your willingness to work on it at that level. Having gone through the comprehensive plan, where one of our options was to hire it out and the city, you know, was fairly certain that we could do it in-house, that has taken a lot longer than anybody has wanted it to. And I would say, though, that using you all as a steering committee to go through the existing plan and figure out what you think needs to be updated, and then figuring out, okay, do we think we can take it on now that we see what shape it's in? Or do we want to hire that out and maybe we'll sit as a steering committee for it? And what I would be glad to do, which is something that they're doing with the comprehensive plan now, is they're going through the chapters of the draft comprehensive plan. I myself, it's been, you know, six years since I've read the preservation plan, and I would not judge anybody who hasn't read it, even if they're on the HPC, because it's dry and it's long and it's old. But I would be glad to, you know, every meeting we have, go through two chapters and say, okay, what's everybody think about this? Let's go through it as a group and, you know, jot down the notes of how good it is or, you know, what needs changed on it. And then at the end of that basic assessment process, you can figure out how much of it is reusable or how much, you know, isn't. And I would also defer to anybody who has experience in preservation plans, because I don't. So if anybody's gone through that process or even strategic planning, you know, it's similar to that.
Well, the only problem that we might come across would be something that might be legal. But as far as like figuring out what we think is our goals and what we think we should be doing in the future, nobody that we would hire would even know that without interviewing all of us. So why even bother hiring somebody? We should just put it all together.
Correct. The goals and objectives, I think, is absolutely the purview of the HPC, but the mechanisms, you know, we are here in Urbana. I've only ever planned in Urbana and Northwest Ohio. I know nothing about maybe what Wisconsin does or New York State does. Other ideas might be applicable here, and that, I think, is the potential benefit of hiring a firm whose job is to do preservation plans, because they, that's what they do 40 hours a week with their staff of 20 people.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that I think that there's the idea of a preservation plan that perfect, like reflects our interests, and then there's the idea of a preservation plan that has a high degree of community engagement, that like a consultant could help manage, so that we get ideas about historic preservation that are more broadly reflective of who's actually here and a wider range of issues in preservation and community storytelling that maybe we don't know about and that maybe you want to discover through, through that process, which could be really enriching and bringing preservation to a broader community. And consulting can be really helpful with that also, because they're not from here, and that may make some people feel more open to conversation with them. So I do think there's some value in that. But I also really love the idea that to prep for being able to tell a consultant what you want, going through the plan and trying to identify like what, what the needs might be, would be an extremely helpful process before approaching someone. Can I also add, like, that I, like, my ratings of various projects were related very much to having read the, the projects and seen that it didn't fund signs, so I put signs at the bottom. And also, my conception of what the website redo really was about was not just making a website, but taking all of the various things that are currently on the website and in my understanding are kind of going to go away as the city migrates to a new one, and using the process of taking all the tour brochures, all of the podcasts, all of the, like, the 100 Greatest Buildings, and like synthesizing them into a website that's actually usable, rather than a bunch of separate documents that are posted. And in that process of synthesizing that information into something like a story map or something that, that's much more usable and that you can like use on a phone and navigate through places in the city, you have the opportunity to then see all of that material as representative of the entire city and not separate projects. And that also provides the similar kind of opportunity to look at like what, what are we recognizing through preservation at this moment and maybe what is missing, once you see this consolidated website in the end. And so like, I think all of the projects that are listed would, to me, fall under website, including education programs for people who own historic properties or should own historic properties, et cetera. So that was my thinking about how those projects fit together.
I, well, one quick follow-up to that. I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with the fact that there has been lots of information posted in various platforms, that because of them, some shift in a platform is no longer, they're no longer accessible. So to be able to bring that together synthetically would have huge value. Things that are, you know, that exist, and then can be, something new can be created out of that. I have a general question. As I'm looking through this, you know, printed document in front of me, it seems implicit and in some places explicit that the logic behind the funding is scaled to hire professionals to assist you with doing this work. And when I say explicit, like under survey projects, we have talented students and faculty who can do all sorts of things, but you're not allowed to do that. It says that you're required. All grant-funded survey projects must be conducted by a qualified professional architectural historian, historian, historical archaeologist, or architect who meets the professional qualification standards listed in this manual and has completed survey projects that have met the Secretary of Interior standards. Applicants should work closely with IDNR, SHPO's survey staff in planning and executing the grants. So it's like, there's a kind of implication there that this is not for, you know, it's not a loving hands at home or a loving hands at the city building project, but it's really about, but I don't see that called out for the planning project section explicitly or public education. But it, looking at the language at the beginning of the document too, there's this emphasis on projects managers and consultants meeting National Park Service professional qualifications Stanford standards and have to be approved by the SHPO in writing. So they're really looking to spend their money on people who can demonstrate that they have done this work before. If that's the purpose of the money, it actually makes our job a lot easier, because we're basically applying to hire somebody to work with our knowledge and our knowledge basis to, that's what it seems like to me, but.
I know in...
More experience of that.
In the past, we've had surveys submitted by classes led by Alice Novak and, you know, by city staff who probably had more architectural experience than I did. It might, and, and those surveys are part of our historic resource inventory. It might be a different animal if we're using state/federal funds to have those surveys done. They want to see qualifications where we didn't have that high bar before. Now I would be very happy to ask and share that with John and say, hey, John, we've, you know, 75% of our surveys were submitted by, you know, students under the direction of a PhD or under a faculty member. Is that sufficient? We've had surveys submitted by members of our local Preservation/Conservation Association who have, you know, this level of expertise. Is that sufficient to meet the CLG requirements? And if he says no, then we don't use CLG to fund a resource inventory. We could use it to update our, our database and the inventory itself, just not the surveys in the inventory if we want to. if we want to like create an online database of our existing surveys. And similar to the question about the signage, we might be able to use the CLG money to design the signage, just not have it printed off or installed. And I think those, that's that discussion with John that we would have, you know, prior to submitting an application.
I think the short-term thing, that since this is due in like a month, correct?
Yeah.
The public education project category doesn't have any of these issues. So the, like, the production of a survey, I think there is a fair question about what they, what they would expect for the leadership of that project. I know that I qualified at one point. It's been a little while since I did something that was submitted. But I certainly qualified to lead these things in the past. I don't want to volunteer myself to lead a survey, however, in the next little bit. And I don't think that that's what the grant is for, to David's point. Like, I do think it's for a different structure of how that's done. But I think the public education project is 100% on target. And everything that's on the list, except for signs, qualifies as a public education project.
And when you say survey, are you thinking the same thing I'm thinking, which is taking a survey of a house?
No, I'm thinking of taking a survey of like an entire area.
Oh.
Which is what survey means.
Okay.
There's like an air, it's a wide, like city-wide, neighborhood-wide, or thematic, right? So if you wanted to look for African-American history or if you wanted to look for, you know, like a broad thematic history in your, in your city, that's what survey is for.
So for the, for the historic preservation plan revision assessment idea, you know, that could be to pay for staff time to work with the HPC on a monthly basis and provide staff support to go through the old plan with you and to take notes and figure out what needs to be done and start researching other cities' plans and what they're doing now. And when I say that, I want to reflect verbally back on what Kate had said about the value of, of doing this and public engagement. The current environment, if you read through City Council of Urbana goals, historic preservation is not in there, okay? It's not a priority. That was different for other city councils before. Resources are allocated, time and other money resources based on those priorities. If something is providing resources, it's more likely that staff time would be allocated to something that's getting paid for by a grant. So an assessment grant to then work with the community and say, what do you think is the importance of historic preservation? And if a, a public interest survey is done and, you know, 75% of the people of the city say, we need to focus on historic preservation, that information can be passed on to city council. And maybe that, you know, influences how they do next year's goals and objectives. And maybe that changes things. We would still then do another follow-up grant for actually doing the revision, but it would have the blessing of city council rather than it, you know, being a commission working on its own.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I did want to just go back just for a moment regarding the education. One thing I wanted to point out is we actually had comments at the last meeting from our, our, our public regarding the education aspect. And so I think that's really crucial for us to keep in mind that we have public interest and public support potentially to assist with that if we go forward with it. But I, I mean, for me, because my name was not on this, because I just, I refrained from, I didn't have access to the spreadsheet either, but I refrained and I just sent you a personal email. But the top two for me, and also noting what you mentioned about the website, so that would be different now. But the top two for me is the education aspect in whatever form that is, but also the plan, just because it's, it's such a high priority. And so whatever form we can do, and I totally understand that we can't just, in the next two weeks, put together that as our grant proposal, but just any headway that we could make. And if, even if it's just, you know, having a few people interested, setting a meeting with SHPO, talking with John Presley, getting a better sense of what we could do with that might go a long way. And maybe the answer will be just, just wait till next year. And then in that case, well, honestly, we could put two, two of these grants in. And so the other one would be the education or maybe it'd be website education in some form.
To follow up on that, I put my number in the spreadsheet link that you gave me. But I was, I, I didn't know how it worked. I put a four for the website.
Okay. What'd you put as a three?
I put the downtown district signage banners. But now that I understand that that's not part of it, I...
Let's, let's go with the same knowledge that everybody had, which was that they all would be eligible for. What did you put down as a two?
I just did four and three.
Okay, all right. So, or maybe a statement, okay. So not being an academic person, I'm more of a pragmatic person. And I see that it's kind of a short stand here, but I know that through the process of working on the city council for years, so many plans have been drafted. We've had, I could name about six or so. Yet no action ever actually physically takes place that changes the community. That's why I think signage, identification, local, local marking is so important. If we can't do it through this grant, if this grant has to be only the mental, mental things or abstract on the internet, which is fine. Everybody looks at the internet. But when you leave the internet and you're going, looking, you know, if you're walking through your downtown, you may not be looking at your internet. You may just be walking as a visitor through the community. How do you find things and how do you identify things? We don't even have signs saying that we are entering a historic district in our downtown. And we also don't have any guidelines to guide future development within the historic district so that future development is in harmony with the supposedly downtown, very important downtown historic area. That is not listed on this list, but might be an important consideration. So anyways, because it would be just such a pleasure to actually fund something that physically shows up in our community, because then you've actually done something. Otherwise, you merely thought of something. And this is one of my issues. So I can support the idea of the website. I mean, that's important too. It seems like staff should be helping fix our website somehow. I don't mean, it's, it's the city's website. The other thing is that it's very interesting that historic preservation is not even mentioned in the downtown comprehensive plan that's being currently brought forward. This commission probably should make a complaint. And secondly, this commission has no money. No money has been, we don't have a budget. Say we wanted to just print up some brochures or do a podcast, sponsor a podcast ourselves. What do we, we have no money to do it. Who's going to give us money? I'm really curious about these things.
Well, so we, you brought up some good points. One that we actually discussed at our last meeting. So I just want to, so...
Good, because I wasn't able to watch that.
It's understandable. But, so we have an assignment before our next meeting, which is to, to go through that comprehensive plan. And we were actually asked by the city to do so and to add comments. So you are very welcome and encouraged to add comments within the comprehensive plan. We have access to a draft version, which I was able to find actually just by typing in, I think it was like Imagine Urbana, or I can't remember exactly at the moment, but we can double-check on that.
I've got a copy of it.
But the other part of it is, it actually, historic preservation is riddled throughout the, the plan, actually. They just never use those words.
Okay, so we're kind of in, sort of invisible, but we're present.
Yes, because as Marcus mentioned about, you know, historic preservation is not even on the list of priorities. That's something that I think is really important for our commission to, to consider because no one is even recognizing that this is a priority. But they are, they're just using different words. And so even being able, not, not only the public, but also being able to reach our own, our own city council is really important. And yes, we can, we can do that through that comprehensive plan. But, you know, also through potentially how, you know, which grants we put in for this. But also, I wanted to mention with the guidelines that you mentioned, I haven't forgotten about those guidelines that you've brought up several months ago at this point. But it's sort of, to me, it seems like it's a cart before the horse if we don't at least start looking at this plan and how we can address and update it. Because the guidelines could potentially be part of that plan. They could be an appendix or what have you. But there's, it's, it's tricky if we put the guidelines ahead of whatever plan that we're gonna update.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, I was on a train. I couldn't attend the meeting. But I, and I've tried to look at the video of it, but it wasn't available that I could tell yet, so. But that was a good update, thank you.
Can I follow, can I follow up with something? Which is that, I mean, I like a lot about what I'm hearing, except of course, I would like for it to be articulated. So, so connecting the dots here in a way, maybe if we focus on education, which would include the website, I see in the manual that education, the categories that they describe, it's outreach programs or activities that promote historic preservation in the community, including production and distribution of information in various media, development of audiovisual presentations or websites, and temporary or permanent exhibits. So maybe one way to be synthetic is to draw on all this material that we have to make a comprehensive website. But that part of the synthetic work is web-based, but part of it is actually event or exhibit-based. But where we think of the audience not as, quote, "the general public", but we think of it, we can think of three constituencies. One would be the general public. The other would be owners, right, which addresses that. And the third might be city council, right? It could actually be that this is like a new moon situation, right? The moon is there, but because the light's shining on it, you don't see it, versus the full moon. And if the education can shed light on the situation a little bit, we might think of, of the city council as actually a targeted audience of the, of what we'd be wanting to do. Because if we don't have that support, not much is going to happen. With that said, I completely agree with this need to revisit and revise that plan. So it's all interrelated, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think that the ideal of a design, redesign of a website is not that you have a website, but that you have something that allows you to use it as a tool to launch a conversation. So like if I were designing a website, when it was done, I would have an event that launches the website and describes the narrative that it's constructing to those audiences. And that also is a website that would allow us to say, okay, we have the 100 most important buildings of Urbana. What are the next 100 most? Like, this is not a static list. How do we add another 100? And ask people to tell us what those other 100 buildings are. Or, you know, just something that is about, this is not static, it's not finished. We've presented this narrative of what historic preservation has done in this very usable, wonderful package. Now, how do we continue to expand it? And so it's not a single project. It's a part of a longer continuum of how you begin to do education.
I'm trying to figure out how, what the best way to submit this to SHPO is. And I could see all of the things being rolled together as an education grant with the Royer brochure as one aspect of it and the website as another aspect of it and an education program as an aspect of it. It feels like it would be more difficult to put together a cohesive, three-pronged grant than to break it down into, here's redesigning the Royer brochure and reprinting it. Here's getting the website up and running with a map and with other things on it. And here is an owner education program with its brochure. And maybe the brochure is there, but the language from the brochure becomes part of the website. But that way, if they don't want to fund one thing, we still have the other two things funded.
I think that's great thinking. And one way to make any of the individual projects convincing would be to locate it within a bigger picture.
Right, yes, absolutely.
So it doesn't just seem like a one-off.
And, and that might actually draw more support for the other two. If you say in the cover letter, we're submitting, you know, a triumvirate, but they're all freestanding, that could be work on their own, but they would be more than the sum of their parts if they, you know, all happened to get funded. Plus the fourth of the preservation plan assessment, which guides the triumvirate. And hopefully, they would fund that to get that updated and revised or starting. But even if they don't, we're going to come back next year for the full-blown thing. And maybe the first six months is the assessment period. And then it moves into the revision period.
What amounts of grant money are we hoping or looking? Do we, in the past, it seems like it's, maybe we got $2,000 or something like that.
So I don't recall what this one particularly said, but I remember looking at the, the, okay, the last grant cycle. They didn't put a max. They basically said, we've got $140,000. The maximum you can ask for is $140,000. That's, I think, partially because they don't get a lot of applications.
And that's for the whole state.
That's for the whole state.
And we have up to two years to spend it if we get funded.
Could be considerable amount if we were lucky.
Well, I like the idea of combining several goals into a master plan. I just would be interested to find out if, what the response would be from the SHPO or whomever who's evaluating it or giving you guidance, whether they identify it as a hodgepodge rather than a, I mean, you know, you put a lot of eggs in a basket, but it's, is it an omelet, you know? So, but that would be good feedback.
And I think, you know, I could arrange and, you know, work with John and figure out a, a time to have that discussion if, if you'd like to be part of that, Angela. And I think having an HPC member there, you know, would carry a little weight than just being a staff member who, you know, of course, all I want is money. So that being said, and the other, the other benefit of breaking it down into bits is we can have two commission members on each bit working on it. And then my job is to kind of facilitate and collate and make sure the applications themselves look good. So I guess, you know, so if we're kind of holding off on the downtown district signage banners for now, and maybe, and not because it isn't a worthy project, but just trying to prioritize. You know, Dennis brought us the Royer district brochure. So I think, you know, that ought to be done and it's a very manageable thing. The website has been down for years and it grates me that it doesn't work. And we spent CLG grant money to get it going. So I think that's a great, you know, priority. We have other conservation agencies who are saying, you need to be out there educating. And I've been putting them off on that for about four years now. And it'd be really nice to get that going. Nobody has bugged me about downtown signage. Everybody thinks it would be a good idea, but it, it isn't a priority at this point. So, I mean, I'm...
I'm curious if there are other ideas about how to fund things like that? Because if the CLG grant isn't, which it's not, like what are the other mechanisms for funding something like a downtown sign?
So, so... So my suggestion would be to have HPC make its presence known at city council. You know, even if none of the grants get funded, after the applications get submitted, you know, boards and commissions, I think, I think they can all do resolutions to city council. And preferably, they come and present it to city council. Dennis, does that sound like, like, I know BPAC has sent resolutions about biking and walking.
Yeah, we ought to make resolutions. We ought to make proposals. That's how the first brochure got done. I mean, you know, it was vetted by HPC. They approved it. It went to city council. It got approved. We found a printer and we went forward.
And so that might be, you know, if you say, you know, we're becoming a working commission. We're working on these applications. We're doing what we can. And implementation-wise, maybe we don't need anything from you right now. Because hopefully, the CLG grants will pay for all of them. But a future one is looking at downtown district signage and banners. We can write a CLG grant for the design, but it's not possible to pay for the printing and the installation. We request that city council pay for those signs if we're willing to do the design and get the design paid for, you know, it's basically matching funds. And the city did a wayfinding study several years back, maybe three or four years back, and allocated some money to it. I'm not sure if any of those signs actually got installed. I know they got designed. So the city sees the use of wayfinding signage. And then that could be, you know, your resolution to them as we know that you've, you know, found the need for signage and we're happy to help design it. You know, this way to downtown historic district means this way to downtown, and it means this way to the historic district.
I wanted to, and you mentioned it just now, the matching. I wanted to double-check regarding the CLG because the grant amount requested must not exceed 70%. As far as that 30%, are we able to say that's HPC time, like individuals' time?
Yes.
Okay.
That is my understanding, and we can, you know, confirm that with John. So I think in the beginning where it talks about your resumes and expertises and whatnots, you know, we figure out your hourly rates, and that's why I provided those old grant applications, which none of you have access to yet right now, where staff who were, city staff who were working on it, you know, I think put in their hourly rates and that counted for the matches.
$5,000 an hour.
So those of us who don't have a degree in the right area, how can we then participate?
I think that's where the discussion of you show your CV in the publications that you've done and the projects you've done. As far as I know, you and Alona basically are the Royer district managers and designers. So if you say, this is what we did and we're basically, you know, wanting to update it and do it again, here's my CV.
Aren't you an author of a Urbana history book?
Co-author. Actually, Alona wrote it pretty much, and I just handled all the illustrations.
You don't have to add all that to the CV, but, you know, being co-author.
We shared credit on the cover, yeah.
So we are coming up kind of on our first hour. And I want to kind of go back to the work team list. And I would basically ask you all, you know, who wants to work on what projects? You know, I put colors in, but you all, you're volunteers. You work on what you want. You, you know, thumb wrestle amongst yourselves for the, you can work on as many projects as you want as long as there's no more than two of you on a project. And then you can bring in whoever that's not on the commission to come play with you. So who, seeing the votes and who wants to work on what, and feel free again to discuss, who would like to be the two to work on the Royer district brochure and signage?
Oh, well, I would.
Okay. Who would like to be the other commission member? Or you can raise your hand and say, I'm interested, and then you can, you know, duke it out. Okay. Is there something that you would like to work on? Well, I guess you could, yeah. Okay, okay. So that, okay. David, what would you like to work on? Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm interested in all three, and so I can be the wild card. Like if, I mean, I'd be delighted to work on the brochure. I'd be delighted to work on the website. I want to commit myself only to one, though.
Right.
One thing, given my time, you know, allocations these days.
Angela, would you be willing to, like, lead or work on the education program? And also the preservation plan? But I'm hoping they will at least see the value of the education program as well.
Yes, and the reason I did not raise my hand for the Royer one is because I thought we could potentially incorporate that into it. But are you saying that they would stay separate?
Well, my concern is if we roll everything together, still only two commission members can work on it. And then we've actually screwed ourselves because, you know, by busting it out into three things, that's six commission members working, you know, out in compliance with OMA.
And then we would feed it to you and you can consolidate it into whatever form was needed?
Right. And also, you know, there will be a November 1st, you know, Wednesday a month meeting where we can come back and discuss things in OMA. And we could call another special meeting if we wanted. But the actual working and drafting and talking to each other, that's gonna be between the two commission members figuring things out. You know, I'm happy to arrange meetings here or put together Zoom meetings. We can look at materials. We can look at budgets and timelines. I will make myself available for that. I can't lead it, but I can facilitate it. And that's the benefit of busting it out into three projects. And then we roll it all together, maybe one or two of you work together on the cover letter of it. Or somebody, you know, whatever the preservation plan project people are gonna be. They're the ones that come up with the cover letter tying these together with that grant application. So that would be, that would be, you know, maybe Angela doing preservation plan and owner education program. You know, David, I've kind of got right down, down right now is Royer and website. But if Trent wants to do Royer and website, you know, David could do website and, yeah, yes.
For me, just one, I really...
What's the one you want to work on most?
I can be the, if, 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 if things are lining up, but there's a gap somewhere and any of those three, you can just put me into that one.
All right. Trent, how do you like the idea of the owner education program? And working with PACA and doing the brochure and figuring out ways to work with realtors and things like that? Okay. Would you prefer to work on the website? Or would you prefer to work on the preservation plan with Angela? The high-level stuff? Or you still would lean more towards the website? Or do you just want to work on one thing? Okay, all right. Sorry. You want, you want to do website?
My four was on the website.
All right, not the, okay, gotcha, all right. So website, all right, website, I'm gonna, too many things. Website, I'm gonna do Andrew and Kate and David. You wanted?
Do that.
You are the wild card. All right. We need owner education. Dennis, did you have a, the second choice was owner education? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sort of interested in that.
All right. So how about?
But we have already two people on that already now.
We had, I had Kate down as the second for that.
That's fine.
Okay, all right. So we've got Kate and Dennis, now I'm using letters. And then for the Royer district, we've got Dennis and Trent. Not that, thank you.
But you lost me. I was on the education one.
Okay.
I think we need somebody else on the plan.
Yes, we do.
If anybody else is interested in that, but I do want to be on the education one.
Okay.
Who's on the plan so far, then?
Angela and now Trent.
Okay.
So Trent's got two projects, Plan and Royer. David...
I'm not on anything. You've got two in every category. So do I get to bump somebody?
Yes, you do. Pick, pick your favoritest thing. See, that was, my first goal was to fill every project up with two people.
Ah, right, okay.
And nobody will feel bad because they've got another project to work on. And really, Angela's just got one right now as well.
Oh, right. So I should bump, I should bump somebody who's got two things going on? Okay.
Yeah, this is like the sorry game, the parcheesi game.
So you kept, you kept hovering over me, oh, because it was four, because I had listed it as four. But I was thinking about signage. Trent, I'm gonna bump you from Royer. But also, it will be an opportunity for me to learn a bit more about Royer. How's that for a snarky, a snarky thing? But unless that, unless somebody, you know, we can also do this where somebody just bumps me. Somebody says, hey, I want to bump you. You're taking my spot. It doesn't matter.
No, I think it's totally fine, but I do want to mention with the Royer one, we have Adam.
Brian Adams.
Brian Adams.
Brian Adams, sorry.
He's also a contributor.
Also is interested, so I would
Which is good.
encourage you all to get in touch with him as well.
Here, yeah?
Hello in person.
Yeah, you can't see him, but I'm, is that too many people on, too many people on that?
No. They are, they're not bumped by OMA.
If the public is not on the commission, we can do that, right? You can have four people on your commission or your committee if you wanted to, if you find volunteers in neighborhoods. So this is getting really confusing for me, but I'm sure you'll tell us what we've, what we've been assigned.
Well, and so Angela, are you okay leading the plan? And is there another project that you want to work on as well? That somebody might be willing to step off for?
Yes. Well, the other one I wanted was the education program.
Okay. Would either Kate or Dennis be willing to cede to Angela to work on the education thing?
I don't think I was signed up for that.
Okay, all right. There you go, Angela.
Education is Angela and whom then?
Okay.
Whom, whom Angela and whom?
That makes complete sense, I would say.
All right, so Royer district is Dennis and David. Website is Kate and Andrew. Education is Kate and Angela. Is that right? And the preservation plan is Trent and Angela. That work for people? Okay. What questions do you have for me? Because my next thing I was gonna do was kind of go through the application has, you know, what's eligible in it, how reimbursements are done, requirements for, you know, matching grants, whatnot. I think at this point, the main thing is, what do you want your project to do? How you're gonna get there, you know, are you going to be doing things yourself? What subprojects are gonna be? You know, are you gonna have activities? Are you gonna have a deliverable? And then your timeline on doing those different steps. How long it's gonna take you by the end, you know, it's gotta be done by the end of 2026. And then what's your budget for those little bits and pieces?
Do we have a sample budget from one of these?
So in the Google Drive that I will send to you or allow you to see, here is the FY15 website grant application. So they did a... What's this? Award letter. So they talked about, you know, there's their project costs, the local match. There's a budget and scope of work in here. This is just the application blank stuff. Yep, that was just the award letter. The memo to staff. So there was a summary of our old CLG. And then here's the ordinance, and here was their budget. Total expenditures were $210,000.
Is it possible to ask Don Presley for a recent sample budget?
Yeah.
This is from 2014.
It'd be incredibly helpful to see how they want those numbers submitted.
Okay.
And then maybe seeing what it looks like, maybe getting some information for how the city wants to, like what the numbers are, like what is a typical summer intern?
Oh, okay.
Like what is that number? So that we can actually put in real numbers. And I'm assuming there'll be like a list of things that are fairly standard.
Can you show us where that file was located again? I just lost it.
On the Google Drive.
What's the name of the one that you opened that had the sample in it? I don't see where it is.
Right. It was FY15 CLG website. And for example, in there was a staffing request form. And so... Blank. Okay. I will get intern information. And then I think in the completion report that was submitted to SHPO, there was a final budget. They included all the CVs of the people that were involved. They included all the CVs of the people that were involved. And there were some of their materials, they printed a postcard that they sent out to advertise to people that there was new online website. You know, it was hosted on Netlify for free. Printing costs. The intern was $15 an hour back in 2015. And then Kevin's rate at that time was $26.75 an hour. And the hours they spent building the map. This will be maybe helpful in the, the website revision. But we can get a sample, recent budget and timeline.
I'm looking on the CLG grant webpage, and it has things like uniform budget template and budget narrative, but that link does not actually lead to a document, so if, maybe...
Right.
Asking John might be useful.
In the FY22 cycle materials, so here's what the 2022 grant form looked like, that I believe is now all on Amplafund.
Yes, the IDNR uses Amplafund platform, and, and all the federal money has to go through that uniform budget template and the GADA and all that, and so, but I mean, we would still need to make our budget, that's just the vehicle to present it. But they, they accept, you know, grant applications, but if, and when they're awarded, if and when they're awarded, the Amplafund is the platform for administering the grant, too, so your budgets go right into the line items that you, while the grant is being administered.
So I'll ask him for a couple, three different samples, if possible, and maybe if they can be similar to the types of projects that we're working on, which would be, you know, a website, a brochure, and, you know, public outreach and education project. That's kind of all I have for this discussion. It was hopefully, you know, picking your teams, coming up with things. You know, it isn't, it isn't live or die, it's a grant application. Again, we haven't done one in seven years. If we get one funded, that's gonna be 6,000% better than we've done in the last three or four years. And I really appreciate your willingness to, you know, step up and be a working committee. And I still have to get you your monitoring, property monitoring assignments. Okay, so I'm gonna sit down, and then we can finish the meeting and go from there.
Do you want to let any of the audience people, maybe they, I don't know if they've got ideas for us or not, but if they got any, I don't, I'd be happy to listen if they
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I don't really have any specific ideas, but I do want to mention that there are...
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, Susan Apple, I'm here representing PACA. Keep in mind that if you pull in people such as myself and others, we have VITAs also, and some of us have the kind of professional backgrounds that might help bolster things, or not. It's hard to say, because everybody's different, but still, I mean, just recall that that's, can be a way of coming up with more donations of time with some kind of monetary assessment attached. Otherwise, I just would remark that we remain interested and willing to help out as best we can, so if there's a way that you can figure out to channel us into helping with one thing or another, or all the overlaps, because they do overlap, we're here.
Thank you. Two of the public members are in the hallway, I don't know if they should be brought in,
Wait, wait for him to come back? Yeah, I'm Brian Adams, from, live in Champaign now, but a former resident of Urbana. Just thanks for inviting me to come tonight to talk about these various projects. Obviously, I'm interested in the Royer brochure. I've been, I published my Royer biography in 2011, but I've continued to research him, and either intentionally or not intentionally, I've continued to come up with more and more information on Royer and his buildings. Trying to get the biography repub, a second edition put out, because it was published by the News Gazette in 2011, but they no longer publish books. So I've been working with various publishers, trying to get an updated revised edition put out. But some of the information that I've come up with, I think would, would be good to be put into an updated version of the brochure. Gone through the brochure with my red pen and made a lot of corrections, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that can be updated and revised based on new information that I've pulled together. I was contacted by Rose Gog, she's the, in charge of marketing and sales at the new Hotel Royer, and she's very interested in putting together like a coffee, coffee table style book about Royer and his projects to kind of market the hotel. So hopefully it'd be another source of getting the information about Royer out there, and she's, she's very interested in learning about him, because she's from, I think, Los Angeles, but she's recently moved here with her family. So she wants to know as much as she can about Royer, so I'm working together with her to try to help the hotel not, not just have the name Royer on it, but also incorporate information about him. And I think an updated version of this would be very good to have there on, onsite for people coming into town and walking up and down Main Street. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, isn't, doesn't anybody else want to have any public comments, or is that it? I just want to thank you all for your time and being here as well, and we certainly will reach out to you for your willingness, we are very appreciative. Do you, do you want to say something? Go ahead, please.
I'm Phyllis Williams, from 810 West Maine. And yes, we have been wanting to work on this brochure for homeowners for a long time. I think part of why you don't see anything about historic preservation in the plan, Imagine Urbana, is because, for some reason, realtors just, they, they just shut down when they hear historic preservation, and that's why we have to pound on education. It's not just houses with gingerbreading, but it's also historic houses that may have a history just back 60, 70 years. And I think this is an opportunity to expand what we think of as historic places in our town. I have to wonder if we couldn't use, what is a permanent exhibition? Could it be a QR code on a building that would help identify Royer, identify historic downtown Urbana? And I'd like that clarified, but we'll do anything that we can to help this effort along. Thanks.
And Phyllis, you, you live in, and own one of the houses in the Main Street Historic District, don't you? Okay.
Yeah, again, thank you, thank you all, we really appreciate your time and coming out here, and I think individually, we'll be in touch with our respective projects to see how we can work with you. Marcus, do you have anything else? Are you ready to adjourn? Because I can call it.
I am ready to adjourn, and then...
I've got a question. Do we want to, we had that information today about the historic house on Weber Street in Urbana.
On the agenda.
We want to wait till...
Yes.
The next meeting, okay.
Okay. I did want to just remind everyone to please do look at that Imagine Urbana plan. If you do not have the link, I can send it to you. And Dennis, I did send it to you, so you have it now.
I had looked at it earlier, I just didn't interact with it yet.
And I, I just want to remind that any communications should be one-way. I think it's okay for the HPC chair to email out to folks. Folks should not reply all. They could respond back to a sender individually, but don't reply all, because then all of a sudden it is a discussion. And as actually, I think, I'm not even sure if the chair can send out an email to everybody, because then you are sharing to multiple, you could share individually, one at a time. So I'm, I'm trying to adjust how I send out my emails, so that the HPC is not in the "to" line, it's in the "BCC" line, so if somebody accidentally hits "reply all," the only person they're replying to is me. I'm having to learn that.
Got it. And so let me just correct then what I just said. The Imagine Urbana plan is located at imagineurbana.com, which is just the word imagine, I-M-A-G-I-N-E, Urbana, the name of our town, dot com. And you will find a link on that page that says, "Imagine Urbana Draft for Review." You click on it, that's where you go to add your comments for the, for the plan. And the city has asked us to do that, and so we intend to do that before our next meeting.
Does the city want those comments to be compiled and presented from the HPC per se?
No. It actually is interactive on the plan, so you just click on it, and wherever you find you want to add a comment, a box will pop up where you add your comment and you'll submit it. Okay. Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Okay.
Just send us our assignments.
Will do. I'll do that tomorrow. And I will also send your property monitoring assignments.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna adjourn at 8:25 PM. No other business will be discussed. Thanks.